Good evening. Welcome to the Costa Mesa Planning Commission meeting for Monday, June 24, 2019. Call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Torje to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone will rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Torje. Julie Rolcall, please.
Chair Jericho.
Here.
Vice Chair Harland absent. Commissioner Colbert.
Present.
Commissioner Navarro Woods absent. Commissioner Russell.
Present.
Commissioner Torje.
Here.
And Commissioner Zick.
Here.
Great. Thank you, Julie. No announcements or presentations on the agenda tonight, and that will bring us to public comment to ensure fair and equal treatment of all who appear before the Planning Commission and to expedite city business. Speakers may be limited to three minutes during public comments to speak on any item within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction which is not listed on the agenda this evening. This time it may be extended for good cause by the chair or majority vote of the Planning Commission. And I think we do have at least one presentation tonight. I see a familiar face. Ms. Gladson.
Good evening. Good to see you.
Good evening, Costa Mesa Planning Commissioners. It is my pleasure to be before you this evening, coming and bearing good tidings to you from the Orange County Planning Association. I serve as a volunteer on that board as the Planning Commissioner's representative. And you may already heard a sneak peek about a thing that we've invented, another wonderful acronym called OC Policy. Some literature was placed in your hot file or on your stand up there this evening. The brochure, Leadership in Planning, or Developing Leaders in Planning, and OC Policy tells you everything you need to know about this opportunity for all Planning Commissioners in Orange County. I will tell you a little bit about it. It also is partnering with the Orange County Planning Directors Association. And we decided we would put this together, a couple of us, including your chair, over some coffee in the last couple of months, and kind of brainstorming about how we can come alongside and help Planning Commissioners grow their leadership skills and their role and where they serve their community. A little bit of my story, as a member of the Board of APA, I am a retired city planner. And I am also a former Planning Commissioner. I served the city of Orange for eight years, on the Planning Commission, two as the chair. So that combination certainly gives me a background on what it takes to do the job. So I will also tell you, my heart has a deep attachment to Costa Mesa because my family lived here, my grandparents, and my uncle still owns a property. So while I live in Orange, I do enjoy coming down here. And yes, we know you are the capital of Cool. What I can also share is that we are having a lunch program on July 18th, and we hope we give you a heads-up early that your calendar will let you join us. We will tell you more about OC Policy and have a couple of opportunities for Planning Directors, retired and actually former directors, to give you a little bit of overview of some of the skills that you need as you grow in your leadership capacity as Planning Commissioners. I won't read the mission for you, but all of that is in the brochure, including the email to connect with me. We are also going to do a survey. You will receive this through Mr. Curtis and your planning team of what you'd like us to do, what you'd like us to help you with. And that leads into the Orange County Planning Directors Forum on October 17th, later this fall. That dates on the flyer as well. So there's a couple of neat things you can take a look at at your leisure. We do want your help on that survey, so if there's something you're interested in, take a look for it, respond, it'll be coming to me, and we'll take a look and strategize on that for 2020. Last, I will tell you. We do have a page on OCAPA dedicated to OC Policy, so you can take a look at that. And if you want to send an email through that as well, it will explain more things as you go forward. I want to share with you that this is a volunteer program. This is directly driven by Planning Commissioners. This is an opportunity for you to come and get involved, too. We're not just going to hold this among ourselves. If you want to come be on the executive board, get involved, or see yourself in your chair's role or as a vice chair down the road, it's time to get that skill set going because it's not easy to be a Planning Commissioner. I will also share, there are about 200 of you in Orange County. We roughly have about 200 Planning Commissioners. So that's a very unique group of individuals who are deciding land use issues for all of Orange County. And you share that with them. And that's a unique role that you can take and build on, both on the dais and off. So I wanted to encourage you, we are on the road coming to visit you. I've been to seven cities. I think this is my seventh. Your chair is going to a few cities. And it's been a good opportunity for us to learn how we can help Planning Commissioners grow in their leadership skills. So thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Gladson. I want to just also kind of piggyback on what she said and thank Adrian and Barry and my colleagues, Commissioner Eric Nelson and Dana Point, and Commissioner, actually, Planning Commission Chair Melanie Schlotterbeck. This is really exciting because being a Planning Commissioner increasingly is much more difficult these days, much more complex with everything, not just learning the basics of being a good Planning Commissioner and developing planning literacy and figuring out how to be good leader, run a good meeting, all those basic things. But in the coming next couple of years, Planning Commissions throughout Orange County and indeed the state are going to be tackling some very complicated issues, new housing elements, rene cycles, dealing with regulations that the Air Resources Board may be handing down, how to figure out land use issues relative to tax increment in an e-commerce era. I mean, all of those things are very complex that if we, as a group supported by OCAPA, PDAOC, we have the expertise around us, good planners like Mr. Curtis, Ms. Lee, Mr. Lee, and land use attorneys educating us about how to be better planning commissioners. So I hope you all get involved, and I will certainly be around to answer any questions you may have, and I hope to see you at the July event. So thank you very much.
Sure. And I would just tee off that, too, to say, and this is because I know the resources that are here in this building. As Planning Commissioners, take advantage of them. You have great staff in Costa Mesa, and Byron has mentioned that. But the other unique role that you can hold on to is they are not you. They are not Planning Commissioners. They are going to help you with the resources you need. Ultimately, you push the button. So that's how you get to wrestle with all of these things and complicated elements of what Byron walked you through. We, and I'm a former Commissioner, we have to finally make decisions, and that's what we got to do in this job. It's not just guessing. It's really coming to good governance and coming to conclusions that are based on often legal facts, and that helps you when it's controversial. So there's a lot of parts of this, but we'll get going. We'll be around, maybe we'll come visit you later on in the fall to remind you for next year.
Great. Thank you, Adrian. Anyone else wish to speak during public comment tonight? And this would be on matters not on the agenda tonight, okay, but within our jurisdiction. All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. That brings us to Planning Commissioner comments and suggestions, and we'll start with Commissioner Russell. Wait out at the end.
I don't have anything right now. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Colbert.
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Torje.
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Zick.
I just want to thank staff and really commend them for this incredible investment, the training that staff and Mr. Dana Borre did. Hopefully, some of that will pay off tonight as we try to push these buttons that Adrian refers to. So wish us luck.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Zick. I have a few items tonight. First, I want to thank the Costa Mesa Senior Center staff who opened up their doors to us for our meetings the last, gee, seven months? About seven months. So they were, it was always prepared. Really want to recognize the CMTV staff who had to haul all the equipment to broadcast down there. Not an easy job, but they were there, Johnny on the spot, and I never knew of any technical difficulties, if there were any. So Julie, thank you very much, and to all the staff who set all that up. And I know it was a long slog and... Which brings me to these new chambers. And Bart, your team, tremendous job of what you pulled off within the short amount of period of time. It's essentially, except for the bones, a new chamber. The technology is terrific. It makes it easier for us. I think it's going to be better for the public. They'll have better visual elements, have more information at their fingertips as they watch at home or here in that chamber. So congratulations to all on a job well done for terrific chambers. I also want to, and if the TV staff can throw the flyer up on the screen, I want to really talk about the July 3 event that will be taking place from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. at the OC Fair and Events Center. It's free entry. There's a ton of activities and shows. There will be food and drink. That'll cost you a few bucks, but I don't think anything that'll break the wallet. Nine o'clock pyrotechnics show. This is really a good opportunity for Costa Masons to get together in one spot to celebrate our nation's Independence Day prior to their July 4 festivities with their family and their neighborhoods and their Safe and Same fireworks, which I am very grateful that Costa Mesa still has, by the way. So I hope everybody will turn out for this, take some time and come out to the July 3 event from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. at the OC Fair and Events Center. Again, the pyrotechnics show is at nine o'clock, and it should be a lot of fun. Finally, I'm going to, we will adjourn tonight in memory, and I just learned this news this evening, of former Assistant Development Services Director Mike Robinson, who I met when I first started covering city government for the Daily Pilot as a columnist back in 2002, I guess it was. Mike was one of the first people I met. And I know he worked with Don Lamb, who's in the audience tonight. Mike was a terrific guy. I always remember him being very low-key, very gentle, very knowledgeable and an expert. And we learned that he just passed away suddenly at a pretty young age, and he served the city for more than 30 years. And so I'm really sad to hear about Mike's passing, and we'll be adjourning our meeting tonight in his memory. With that, oh, I'm so good at this. We will go to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for discussions. Items removed from the consent calendar will be discussed and voted upon immediately following Planning Commission action on the remainder of the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar tonight, and I understand Commissioner Russell and Commissioner Torje, you need to record some abstentions. So Commissioner Russell first.
Yes, I'd like to abstain from voting on consent calendar items one and two since I wasn't part of the Planning Commission at that point.
Okay. Thank you. And Julie will record those abstentions. And Commissioner Torje.
Yes, the same items, one and two was not present on the Planning Commission at that time. I'd like to abstain.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any members of the public who wish to pull any of the consent calendar items? Okay. Any members of the commission wish to pull any of the consent calendar items? Okay. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion on the consent calendar.
Move all items.
Okay. We need to, yeah, you hit your make motion button. There you go. Okay. I will second the motion for the consent calendar, and we'll call for the question. Once your voting button lights up, then you touch it. If it lights up, if it's gray, did you touch it? There we go. How are we doing? I've got five yeses showing on my screen, so we're good to go. Okay?
So that motion carried 5-0 with Commissioner Torje and Commissioner Russell abstaining from consent calendar items one and two.
Thank you very much. Okay. That brings us to public hearing item number one. Julie, please.
Public hearing item number one. Zoning application 19-37 is a request for a minor conditional use permit to install a small cell facility on top of a replacement Southern California Edison street light pole located within public street right-of-way near 1541 Winter Green Place. This is a call to report any ex parte communications.
Commissioners, any communications to report? Okay. Seeing none, we should have, hold on a second. So the staff is recommending to the commission that we continue this matter to the July 8 Planning Commission meeting. As the public may be aware, and we mentioned this at the last Planning Commission meeting, that the city council will be taking up at its July 2 meeting, will be reviewing how these small cell applications are handled. In the meantime, what I will do is I will open the public hearing for this item. If there's anybody who wishes to speak tonight, you may. So please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ray Walls, and I'm the property owner at 1541 Winter Green Place, or actually co-owner, Winter Green Place, Costa Mesa. As you know, we were quite upset with the last Planning Commission meeting involving this issue, and there were several things that were supposed to be answered. AT&amp;T was going to come up with a proposed new location. Have they done that?
So go ahead and complete your comments, sir, and then we'll ask staff to answer those questions.
All righty. Kind of rhetorically, what have you learned? You know, there was a lot of information provided you that evening, and in that information was, for instance, the Supreme Court ruling in California indicating that you did not only have to rule on the aesthetics. And we felt that your consultant was fairly biased towards the cell companies and leading you in that direction versus really consulting for the city in their best interest, since so many residents are opposed to this, thus the current city council meeting on July 2. Did they ever determine about moving light poles? Because I assume there was some kind of study in the past where they placed light poles, and now all of a sudden, because the cell companies want to come and do things, they're going to be moving light poles throughout your city. And right now, I think it's around 50 that you're going to be relocating. And how is that going to affect your environment? You know, is it going to be adequate lighting? Was there any real study done about light pole replacements? And I guess really that's the end of it. You know, I just wanted to know, did they do an alternative? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So just real quickly, just so you have the information, that item that you spoke at at the last meeting was continued to our July 8 meeting. So with respect to the questions you had of what has been done, probably not much because the city council at its July 2 meeting is going to revisit how we address all of these things. So it's really important for you and the other people who spoke at the previous Planning Commission meeting to be at that July 2 meeting and voice your concerns because until the council provides a new direction or a clearer direction for the Planning Commission on how we're going to handle these, there's really not a lot we can do. We're kind of the, you know, we're the subs, or the scrubs. So the city council decides, and then we implement what the city council decides from a policy perspective. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chair members of the commission. I apologize for being tardy here today. I went to the wrong location for the hearing. I wanted to, I did receive an email correspondence from Mr. John Willey and asking about the status of the alternative analysis. We're working on that. There is, one of our engineers that actually is the head engineer for this location is currently on vacation. So I was going to propose and ask for an additional two-week continuance from the July 8, if that's feasible.
So I don't know why it wouldn't be feasible, but I want to check with Mr. Preziosi about the shot clock tolling that we agreed, that the applicant agreed to at our last meeting. How deeply into that? I think we had decided on 60 days.
Correct. That's my recollection that we decided on 60 days. However, I don't have the calendar in front of me, and we did another affirmative, I would suggest another affirmative waiver of the shot clock to take us to that date, and then pending any city council review of any action on that date.
Okay. So it sounds like your request would be for the July 22 meeting?
That's correct.
Staff, how are we on scheduling and agendas? Would that be okay?
The July 22 meeting works for staff and our noticing requirements.
Okay. And then I will also ask the applicant if he would agree to an additional tolling of 10 days on the clock from the previous 60 that we decided.
Yes, we will be sending an actual tolling agreement to the city for confirmation for that date.
Okay. Mr. Preziosi, is that satisfactory to council?
I'll have to see the agreement itself, but my understanding...
And that's because you're a good lawyer.
I understand the applicant is representing that they will be entering into an extension of the tolling agreement. The actual form of that tolling agreement will be agreed upon between the city and the applicant, but that the applicant is offering an unconditional waiver of the shot clock up until that new hearing date.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, our current shot clock ends on July 11 at this point, but yeah, we'll be asking, and again, we'll be submitting an actual tolling letter that will provide us that additional extension.
That's fine.
Okay. So thank you, sir. If you have any additional comments, I will, I'm going to go ahead unless there's questions from the commission of staff. I'm going to go ahead and move that we continue the public hearing for zoning application 19-37 to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting of July 22 with the understanding that the applicant will be submitting a shot clock waiver to the city.
I'm going to second that motion.
So you need to hit your second the motion. Do we got it? Okay. Any comment on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Zick.
So I'll be supporting the motion, simply continuing the item. The thing I wanted to point out, because I don't recall if this homeowner had overheard some of the discussion on this issue as it's come up before us previously. And the primary reason why council is looking at this item in the first meeting in July is because of the issue that the Planning Commission faces when reviewing these and having very little latitude at all, very little discretion in approval or not approval based on what the current FCC rules are. And so the city council is taking a look at that from the standpoint of improving the process, meaning not wasting all the staff time generating these reports, wasting the commission's time, and obviously wasting the public's time. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be changing the rules. It just may mean they streamline the approval process. So you certainly would want to take advantage of the opportunity to express your concerns to the city council because it's more than, to you, it's more than just changing this process because things will get approved more administratively, and you'll have less of this public opportunity to express your concerns. I'm appreciative of the applicant for this, extending the time for their engineering analysis. The streetlight location that is across the street near 3094 Mace may or may not work. If it does, that satisfies you. It may not satisfy the people who live near that address, but I'll be supporting the motion to continue the item. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Good clarifying comments. Any comments from the other commissioners? Okay. Then we will, we have a motion by the chair, seconded by Commissioner Colbert. Call for the question.
That motion carried 5-0 with Vice Chair Harland absent and Commissioner Navarro Woods.
Thank you very much. And that takes us to public hearing item number two. Julie.
Public hearing item number two. Zoning application 19-41, a minor conditional use permit for live entertainment and dancing for a proposed restaurant at the Triangle, 1870 Harbor Boulevard, Suite A210. This is a call to report any ex parte communications.
Commissioners, any communications to report? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Lee, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. The subject property is the Triangle Square, or formerly known as, or the Triangle is the current name, formerly known as Triangle Square, located near the city's downtown. As you can see in this exhibit, it is bounded on all sides by public streets, West 19th Street to the north, Newport Boulevard to the, roughly to the south, and Harbor Boulevard to the west. The property is located in what's called a PDC, or Plan Development Commercial Zone. It also has a general plan designation of commercial, and of course, the triangle is a commercial retail development. These are some site photos specific to the tenant space that is part of the proposed request that the commission will be reviewing this evening. And I have some additional background information relative to this particular restaurant that I'll get to in a moment. But first, a brief history of the triangle. The triangle was originally reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission back in May of 1989. And in the years that its subsequent operation, it changed ownership several times. One of the ownerships was an out-of-country or offshore owner. As a result, the center began to go into a state of decline. Tenants began moving out and were not being replaced. This was all until March of 2012, when a new owner acquired the Triangle Square, remodeled and rebranded it as the Triangle. And this proposal was approved by the Planning Commission in March of 2012. So between 2012 and 2017, various changes have been initiated at the triangle, including updated paint scheme, updated signage, addition of several new tenants, including the Time Night Club, which was formerly the Sutra Club that used to occupy a space on the second floor, actually next to where Saddle Ranch used to be. The Keys on Main on the first floor, which is where the Gap used to be. And I should also point out that the Gap was at the far end of the triangle towards Newport Boulevard. Time Night Club is actually in the area on the north side where Nike Town used to be. And so through the last several years, all of these changes have come before the commission in forms of different applications, different requests, all of which have been... requests, all of which have been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. So with specific to the subject tenant suite, the first minor conditional use permit the commission reviewed was in 2005 for Chronic Cantina Restaurant. That restaurant remained in operation at this space until 2010 when it closed. In June of 2011, a separate minor conditional use permit for Saddle Ranch was approved by the Planning Commission. Saddle Ranch actually began operation in 2013 and closed in 2018. So with regards to this particular project, this diagram shows the location of the future Cafe Sevilla, the former Saddle Ranch. As I indicated, it's on the second floor of the triangle, directly across from a former Mexican restaurant, La Vida Cantina. The large triangle that you see to the north of the slide is the movie theaters. So this is the floor plan layout, or I should say, one of the floor plan layouts for the proposed tenant space. Basically, what you're seeing in this diagram is an outdoor patio area, which is basically all around. This patio area is actually existing. It was part of the Saddle Ranch patio when they were in operation. The main entry is through the common area towards the front. And what you'll see for the interior tenant space, which is currently in the building division for plan check, is that you'll see, of course, a lot of the back-of-house area with the kitchen, dishwashing and areas to the left-hand side of the slide. To the right-hand side, you'll see off the main entry is a tapas bar. Now, by tapas, this means the serving of small appetizers, not necessarily alcohol-related. There is also the main bar, which was part of the original Saddle Ranch in the main dining area on the right-hand slide, and a new patio bar area that you see on the lower left-hand portion of the slide. So the main dining area is basically the main area that's off to the right-hand side of the slide, and this is, will all be enclosed by clear glass windows and doors. Now, I say this, this labels the floor plan as the dining layout because in addition to being a restaurant, Cafe Sevilla will also be providing live entertainment in the form of singers, dancers, that's both patron and professional dancers performing. So basically, what happens in the dancing layout is that the tables and chairs that are part of the main dining area will be removed and basically made into an entertainment area. You will see an existing raised stage that will be part of the layout, also music DJ booths, and basically all of the other fixtures and improvements would remain as-is. So more specifics about the description of the use. Cafe Sevilla is a restaurant that specializes in European, Spanish cuisine. They will also, as I indicated, be proposing live entertainment, dancing after 11:00 PM on specific nights. They will be operating in the Saddle Ranch space, and the applicant, applicant does operate similar restaurants in Long Beach and San Diego. The city zoning code basically allows for eating and drinking establishments open past 11:00 PM that provide live entertainment or dancing, subject to approval of a minor conditional use permit, or MCUP. Although the zoning code does allow minor conditional use permits to be approved by the zoning administrator, past practice as related to, specific to the triangle, has been to take these requests to the Planning Commission. As I indicated in my earlier slides, when live entertainment was proposed for, as part of the Time nightclub, also the Keys on Main, as well as Chronic Cantina, years after they got their initial approval, they also proposed the live entertainment. All of those minor CUPs, instead of taking those to the zoning administrator, they went to the Planning Commission. The primary purpose of this is to allow the Planning Commission to deliberate the specific request at a public hearing. So this slide, which is also within your staff report, basically outlines the hours of operation, the days of operation, and the specific entertainment type, and the areas within the tenant space in which that specific entertainment will occur. So as you can see, it will, their entertainment will consist of basically a variety of live musicians performing different types of music, flamenco, tango performers, guitarists, dancers, singers. And at the very bottom of the slide, the 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, seven days a week, that is the hours of operation proposed for the restaurant. And during those hours of operation, they can also, in addition to having various entertainments, entertainment options for the patrons during their evening hours, they can also have the restaurant booked out for private special events, such as banquets, birthdays, and weddings on a per-event basis, but the entertainment would basically be within the confines of the entertainment offerings that are offered in the above levels of the table. Attached in your supplemental memorandum is an updated resolution that reflects the recommended conditions of approval. Actually, this, even though it's a condition of approval, this is also stipulated in our municipal code, that basically you can have live entertainment, subject to the issuance of a separate public entertainment permit. The public entertainment permit is issued by our Community Improvement Division, and it's renewed on an annual basis. So if, in fact, during that, during that year of operation, there are violations, our Community Improvement Division can move to suspend or revoke that public entertainment permit. In addition to that condition, there are two additional conditions of approval. It should be pointed out that in your original staff report, the applicant had stipulated in their description letter, a recommended condition of approval after a meeting with the Police Department Area Commander. Basically, in those discussions and with the revisions that are reflected in the supplemental memorandum that's before you this evening, we are recommending specifically, this is condition of approval number four, basically stipulating that the exterior doors and windows that separate the interior dining area from the patio be, remain closed during any performance of live entertainment after 10:00 PM. No live entertainment shall take place on the outside patio after 8:00 PM, and no live amplified music will be allowed on the outside patio at any time. And in addition to the live music, background music will be piped into the outdoor patio area via speakers that will be installed at each table. So in the event a noise complaints are received with regards to those, the volume levels of the exterior speakers would be required to be reduced. So this was the condition that we reviewed with the Police Department, and with some additional recommended wording that has been highlighted here by underline. So if in the event, the Costa Mesa Police Department responds to a call for service at this location, and that call for service is related to excessive alcohol consumption, and that's specific alcohol consumption is directly linked to this establishment and confirmed to have occurred within a 60-day period, then the business owner has agreed to stipulate the following levels, increasing levels of changing their operation until the conditions have been met to the satisfaction of the Police Department. So that would be closing 30 minutes earlier, which is the second bullet point, and the suspension of bottle service, which is unique to this restaurant, and it basically involves serving alcoholic beverages in the original, and I'm talking about the wine, champagne, and hard liquor in the original bottles that is basically brought to the tables for a period of 30 days. So staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA pursuant to existing facilities, and approve the zoning application 1941, subject to the revised conditions of approval as contained in the resolution in your supplemental memo. This concludes my presentation. I can respond to any questions Commissioners may have, and the applicant is also present to respond to any questions and also has a brief presentation they would like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, for that report. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Zick.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Lee. A couple of questions. On page 47 of the conditions of approval, there's no indication regarding the hours of operation being extended to 2:00 AM and consumption of alcohol past 11:00 PM. Is that because those two aspects of their operation are already covered under ZAO 5-23, which is still in place?
Basically, well, actually, ZAO 523 was, let me double check, I think that was the one, that was for Chronic Cantina?
There were two for Chronic Cantina.
Yeah, because actually, when Chronic Cantina vacated that space, the commission did revoke that conditional use permit.
Oh, no, they revoked 57. The staff report indicates they revoked 57, not 23.
Oh, I think 57 was for the live entertainment and dancing.
That's right.
Yes, okay. Yeah, so, so what this, what this ZA application does is that it actually supersedes that one, as well as superseded the separate minor CUP that was approved for Saddle Ranch. Saddle Ranch did not have live entertainment or dancing, but they were also allowed to provide, to operate past 11:00 PM with alcoholic beverages.
Right, so I'm just asking for clarification since those two aspects of the operation are not in the, this?
Right.
Okay.
So this will supersede those prior approvals?
Okay, I'll go on with my next question. So I was looking at the revocation of 57 that was done back in 2005, and I was curious about that. And I'm looking at a page out of that staff report, and it starts by, by pointing out that these conditions of approval typically run with the land. But it goes on to say that the Planning Commission can modify or revoke the application if it's found to be a public nuisance or not in compliance with conditions of approval. It goes on to say that the city attorney's office advised that in the past, use permits should also be revoked through the city-initiated activities if a business is closed or a use discontinued. So that seems to me to justify why that minor condition use was revoked. What I don't understand, it's a long way to get to my question, why wasn't ZAO 5-23 also revoked at the same time? And that's the one that allows the alcohol past 11:00 AM?
Well, basically, the selling of alcohol past 11:00 is already allowed through minor conditional use permit. We were aware at the time that another potential tenant could be going into that space, so we didn't want to summarily revoke that conditional use permit, or minor conditional use permit, in case the next operator wanted to come in. And then what happened as the years have gone on, we found that it was actually easier to just issue a new minor conditional use permit whenever a new use went in, and that's what's the case with Saddle Ranch. But you are, you are correct in that that original CUP was not revoked.
Okay, and then when the Planning Commission, back in September 2005, was looking at this ZAO 523, at that time, the zoning administrator had denied it, and the Planning Commission was looking at overturning that. And in that staff report, part of the rationale that was given by the city was that the proposed use was not compatible. There was also a question about parking, but my question isn't really related to parking. And there was also a reference to the Police Department, quote, "their concern," quote, "could create noise, loitering, and security problems." So my question is, are those Police Department concerns basically being handled now by this condition number five that you have reported?
Yes, and actually, that was the basis for going forward, bringing these types of applications to the Planning Commission, as opposed to having them reviewed by the zoning administrator. One was to provide public notice in a public forum for these types of uses, specifically for the triangle, and two, to make sure that their request in operation was thoroughly vetted by our Police Department.
Okay, and then my last question relates to occupancy. And there is a condition of approval listed on page 47 that talks about maximum occupancy shall be posted in public view, common practice. My question is, with regard to the determination of that maximum occupancy, I would expect with a table-seated restaurant environment, there might be one determination of, with tables removed and dancing, live entertainment, I'd expect there to be a different determination. So my question is, will there be two different maximum occupancies depending on the configuration of the restaurant?
I'm not certain if there would actually be two separate occupancy classifications, or there would be one overall arching occupancy level. I do know that, as I mentioned earlier, the plans are in building division for plan check, and they are being reviewed by building safety as well as the fire department, but I'm not certain at this point if there would, they would actually establish two separate occupancy classifications, or just one blanket one for the entire use.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Torje?
I have less of a question and more of a comment, if that's okay. I appreciate what Commissioner, is that all right?
I prefer for comments-
To wait?
To wait until we have the public hearing and-
Okay, so I do have one question then.
Don't want to get ahead of our skis.
Great, thank you. For staff, for the surrounding uses, including the restaurant across the way, are there similar conditions in terms of the, pardon me, the private club and, I'm just wondering if it's a similar, if it's a similar, if there are similar conditions of use for the surrounding restaurants?
Yes, we have a standard template of conditions of approval for different categories of uses, including bars and restaurants, and that is a standard condition of approval for all of these types of uses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have just a couple, and it may be the applicant, when we have him come up, can answer, but I'm, I'm looking at the floor plans and the table that describes the various dining, live entertainment, dancing uses broken down into times, the table that you put up, and maybe if we could put it up on the screen. It was, I think, a purple grid. So just generally speaking, from my looking at the floor plan and looking at this table, the intensity of the use strikes me as being pretty significant. And I'm wondering if, from staff's perspective relative to the triangle and the history of parking problems there, with the success of Keys on Main- there, with the success of Keys on Main, did staff give any thought to whether or not this particular application proposed a more intense use, I'll call it, than, say, Saddle Ranch did? And was there a conclusion reached if you did kind of take that into consideration?
We, we reached a conclusion that, basically, because they are occupying the exact same footprint of Saddle Ranch, true, they will have entertainment and dancing, which Saddle Ranch did not. However, in terms of parking analysis in our zoning code, and specifically the parking studies that were done for the triangle, there was nothing unique to the operation that would have triggered a higher parking requirement, because whether it's a restaurant, or a restaurant with entertainment and dancing, our code basically parks at exactly the same.
Okay, and that's kind of what I was looking for, and I figured that was the case. So kind of a side question, has the city, have we ever done a parking utilization study at Triangle?
Several.
Several?
Yes.
Okay, and how are we doing in that regard?
Actually, I'll actually let Mr. Lamb speak to that. I think the last one that we did might have been for Time nightclub, or might have even been for Keys on Main, because basically, they have, their, their crowds basically will let out at the same time, so we did craft some additional requirements as far as their valet parking, they have to have parking attendants, additional security, if necessary, to make sure patrons are leaving, they're doing all of the right things when they do leave, and I think they had also established a Lyft and Uber drop-off pickup area inside, somewhere inside the parking structure as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee, and I think we even actually touched on that ride-sharing aspect of it, because I think they were doing it out on Harbor for a while.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Lee, you look like you're eager to talk.
Just to clarify on your question of the intensity of use, this request is for live entertainment, specifically adding dancing in coordination with the serving of alcohol. There wasn't that type of dancing use, obviously, at Saddle Ranch, so it is a different type of use, but from staff's perspective, it was not necessarily more intense. It's operating as a restaurant with sort of supplemental live entertainment for their patrons, and then when it is not operating in that way, the tables are being removed, and so there's sort of an offset at that point of intensity. So staff did look at specifically the live entertainment proposed, and we felt it was appropriate.
Great, thank you, and I knew you guys are so smart that you would do that, I just wanted to ask the question, so you all could get on the record to say that, so that's terrific. Commissioners, that's all my questions. Commissioner, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Zick.
I did have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
And this stems from a, a post I saw in the last couple of days, referring to a situation at the Triangle where, as I understood the way it was mentioned, that Triangle Security was called and handled the situation. So my first question is, is there a separate Triangle Security Force?
Yes, I believe that when we processed the Time nightclub, one of, one of the things the applicant had indicated was that they were going to have a security company that basically looks at the entire Triangle, as opposed to having separate security for each individual entertainment use.
Would you happen to know if that security service is, number one, required to log incidents that they respond to, and, number two, share that log with the Costa Mesa PD?
I do not have that information, though.
So in terms of this condition number five that talks about CMP calls, what I'm wondering about is, well, no, no question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Ms. Lee.
One thing I wanted to clarify is to Commissioner Zick's question. First, I'll get to a condition of approval. There's actually a typo in the condition number four in the resolution that was attached to your supplemental memo. There should be a comma after, let me find it here, it's actually a condition of approval number five, I apologize, there should be a comma after the word occurred, it changes the meaning of the sentence a little bit. So that's my primary clarification, and then Commissioners, Zick, your question as to hours of operation. Condition of approval number one is a standard condition for us, and it essentially states that if there are any changes to hours of operation, based on what was stated in the staff report, that staff would look at that as a potential modification to the approval. So that is the way that we're clarifying hours of operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward to either one of the podium, and, good evening, sir, I would ask first all, first of all, if your client has read the conditions of approval, including those provided in the supplemental memo dated June 24, and if he agrees with them.
Mr. Chairman, the answer is yes to that.
Thank you, sir, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening, my name is Don Lamb, and I represent the property owner Cannon Management, and the new restaurant Cafe Sevilla, who is moving in, and that would be Ann and Eric Van den Hout, and Ann asked me to introduce her first, so these are very fine business people that have operations down in San Diego, Long Beach, and Riverside. I wanted to take a few minutes and go back and talk a little bit more about this property, since I have a little bit more of a historic perspective, being as old as I am in this community. The Triangle, for your benefit, was a city-sponsored project. It dates back from 1986, when the city wished to redevelop the downtown. That block, at one time, was a series of one-story dental offices and other types of uses. So the city, through its redevelopment agency, funded a $700,000 loan, assisted the development of this, and actually condemned the property for the Triangle Square to be built, and it was named after a mayor and council member at the time, Peter Bufo. Peter Bufo said, "We need a downtown public square where the community could meet and have big events." So the brilliance was Triangle and Square. Unfortunately, the square failed. The square ended up, when it was built, being for a more of a fast-food, quick-serve, ice cream sandwich type of area, and ended up being one where people loitered, and the square basically failed. But the grand opening was, was quite good in those days. For those of you who are trivia buffs, Sir Richard Branson, owner of Virgin Records and Virgin Airlines, actually came out for the opening of his keynote store in this part of the United States, and ziplined down into the open square, and there was a rock band that did its Orange County debut, it's called No Doubt, with Gwen Stefani. So the Triangle has a very strong history, but unfortunately, in the nineties, we hit a recession, and those original developers never made a dime and lost it back to the financial institution, and it was, as staff said, acquired by a family out of Hong Kong who did nothing, did not maintain it, did not lease it, and it sat for years, and it was a serious eyesore in the downtown. Greenlaw Partners was the developer buyer that Mr. Lee had referenced, acquired the property at a substantially reduced price, and spent over $25 million doing a complete makeover, and that makeover is everything that Mr. Lee mentioned, from landscaping, paint, plumbing, everything was a major deterioration there. The plumbing was bad, the electrical, and they just had to rebuild, and about, the only tenants that remained at the time they acquired were the Yard House, the Cinemas, who used to be originally an Edward Cinema, and now is the Triangle Cinemas. I think there was North Face, there was a few other small stores, but Greenlaw was wise enough to look at it and say, "This is a location for entertainment, fitness, dining, and specialty retail," about the same time that the Irvine Spectrum Entertainment Center was coming about. So this was Costa Mesa's chance in the downtown to revitalize, and they did. So with Greenlaw's help, they put in the first, or the second, I should say, 24-hour fitness in the basement, and there is a swimming pool down there, which was a major feat to build. When that 24-hour fitness opened, it was successful, within 90 days, at their peak of capacity, extraordinarily good. The other uses that it did well, replacing the old failed Nike Town, ended up being Club Sutra at the opposite end. Sutra, though, has been problematic for the city, and that has gone through changes, and the new ownership style is the Time nightclub. But moving forward, Saddle Ranch came along, and Saddle Ranch added something new and different. It's kind of a novelty, it had its mannequins on the outside and the stagecoaches, and I was here at this same podium, representing them here in the city of Orange at the time, and they did well in the beginning with their mechanical bull, but it was a novelty, and the novelty really appeared to the tourism, going to the beach, coming by Costa Mesa, doing a few things, and heading up the freeway, and unfortunately, the entire chain has since failed, and they are gone. Ownership changed to current owner Cannon Management, who decided to stick with this old guy to guide them along the way. So Cannon has reached out and said, "We'd like to bring back into the downtown a nice new, fine dining restaurant, something that you really have not seen in a while," and Cafe Sevilla has been in discussions with them for over one year. So those negotiations went on. Cafe Sevilla brings to the Triangle something that's, I think, is greatly needed, a fine dining menu, it does have a mild form of entertainment, it does serve alcohol, and every restaurant out there now has to serve alcohol. The entertainment and the dancing is salsa dancing, which I wouldn't have any idea how to do it, but I've been told by our fine city clerk over here, she happened to visit one years ago in Riverside, and she really enjoyed it, so it must be a very nice place to frequent. So it is a quality upscale restaurant, and I can say doubtful that it will attract certain of those people from across the street who like to drink refreshments at a certain Goat Hill Tavern. I don't think they'll be coming over for salsa dancing or salsa lessons, and when you see this so-called nightclub after hours, it's really a banquet room. It's a banquet room, so if you wish to have your wedding reception there, you can do it, you can have salsa lessons, you can have entertainment, so it's a combination of things, and that's really what the ownership is looking for, something new and fresh, and not a mechanical bull with mannequins and a stagecoach. So I think it's a real coup for the city to attract them. I'll skip the other comments I had about the Triangle. It is doing well, but it has not been easy. We had another recession that ran from '09 through '13, it had its toll. We had, the last two years have had wet winters, which really affected the outdoor business of the patios at La Vida Cantina, for example. So the comment about parking there, they have not been over capacity in the parking lot, the valet services sometimes aren't even needed. So there is a time here where this property owner does need your help, and they do need to bring in this nice new restaurant. They still have a large vacancy right next door, which is a suite where Club Sutra used to be located. That originally was an Italian restaurant, Fuzi's, it was called when it first opened, so that suite is still vacant, and this restaurant is just a key to make everything bright and fresh. The new owner has really great new ideas, Mr. Tyler Mateen. Tyler will be back to see you in the next six months or so, with ideas on marketing and signage, and a new look, and new fresh views about this, so I look forward to seeing that as well. The current owners of the business, Eric and Ann, as I mentioned in the audience, they are very experienced, they have over 30 years of experience owning and operating their own businesses. Their first business down in the Gaslamp District of San Diego, they went through their growing pains, they developed their business association, they're very much involved in the Gaslamp District Business Association, restaurants, and others. They do have entertainment that is flamenco guitar. They seek your support, they know that they are something different, but they assure you that this is not an attraction to the crowd that goes to the Time nightclub, that probably the twenty-somethings from Los Angeles would not come down for salsa. So it is a different crowd, a different type of people, probably a little more mature and older, that would frequent this restaurant for fine dining and a totally different menu. So with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions, but I'd like to introduce Ann and Eric to come up as well, say a few things, and just run through a few of the quick slides, if you don't mind. Mel mentioned, again, the same site plan, the space as outlined is the Saddle Ranch former space for Cafe Sevilla. The floor plan, the same thing to the right, again, is both the dining area, banquet room, entertainment, all the above. It's a multipurpose room is really what it is. That's where the mechanical bull used to be when Saddle Ranch was there. The Van den Hout, so, in fact, why don't you come on up, Eric and Ann, and let them take you through their 30 years of business, and here's a beautiful, fine picture of Eric back when he was about 18 years old, so we'll let them take, this will go forward on a few of the slides.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen. Yes, thanks for your time, and, and thanks for giving us the opportunity here. Interestingly enough, we had looked at the Triangle Square in the early 2000s, the ownership at the time of the center was not exactly what we were looking for, so we went and opened a location in Long Beach. We started in the Gaslamp Quarter in 1989, I started, should I say, and we are, this is the origin location, what you're seeing right now here, it was located on 4th Avenue in the Gaslamp Quarter, we were the only one out of two restaurants in the Gaslamp Quarter at the time. The Gaslamp Quarter grew to host over 90 restaurants within a few years. So it was a very interesting beginning, and it was a very interesting moment to be involved with the Gaslamp Quarter Association and with the police department, that we're really, really trying to look at ways to turn around the Gaslamp Quarter area into a true attraction, which it became on the onset of the gas, the convention center being built and so on. The food we do serve is authentic Spanish. There's two aspects to it, one that's very unique, which is what you call tapas. So we called our establishment a tapas bar, not to be confused with topless bar, which has happened in the past, but the tapas are small dish, and the idea is people are sharing those small dishes and, and getting all those different flavors and textures and everything else. It's a fresh product, sautee a la minute, which we're very proud of. The menu is quite large, it encompasses about 50 tapas and 20 paellas and main course. I don't want to go into detail of the menu too much, but for example, we imported this very specific rice from the Valenciana area in Spain, we are as authentic as it gets in term of what we offer there. Being a true Spanish and European restaurant, we do tend to do a lot of food business on late nights, meaning our peak moment for our kitchens actually around 10 o'clock at night on the weekend, which is maybe not traditional, but it is, it is what it is, we are very true to what we do. In term of, one of a signature moment is we do offer flamenco and tango dinner show, those are three-course meal with authentic performers from Spain and South America that are doing their performance over a period of an hour and a half. That is something that will be occurring every Friday and Saturday night into the room to the right on the plan, the room that is kind of multi, multi-use and everything else. The clientele coming to it are usually a clientele that is in, at the earliest, in their late 30s and on. We also, because a lot of the European descent on that, have a lot of those people staying on after that and appreciating either live music, old DJ music, and some light dancing. I do not want you to confuse us with a full-blown nightclub, such as other nightclubs in the surrounding area. This is not who we're going for, this is not how we have been opening a guestland for almost 30 years now.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four years, yes, I'm thinking in Long Beach for almost 30. In term of our banquet, it's an important portion of what we offer, we do offer banquet, and that's why that room is so important to us. We do all in any occasions. In term of our other dancing in that open area, we are offering salsa, bachata, and some of the Latin dancing along those lines. I want you to know that the crowd that it attracts are people that are passionate about dancing and not about partying or being on any form of an excess. It is, it is a segment of clientele in, in the business we've been carrying on for all the years we've been open, it's really served us well. It's really served us well. I don't know what else to say about the fact then we were very happy with staff to be negotiating some of the conditions in term of us having to do the right thing. I would also point out then, cumulatively speaking between all our locations, we have been licensed by the ABC for over fifty-five years. And to this date, we'd never had a day of legal license being suspended for any reason. So we stand proud with that record. As you can see, we're not thirty-something, we're a little bit older than that, and so we really intend to have a business that is catering to a clientele that we feel good about, and we want to repeat business is our motto. That's really what we're looking for.
And I would, if I may, just add, one of the things that we look forward to is to really incorporate ourselves within the community. We want to be, if at all possible, be one of the destinations, by the way, a little bit of plugging for yourselves, but really for the inherent people in the community. So this is not necessarily a convention market like we have in the downtown San Diego. Long Beach is very little in convention. It's a lot of the local folks that come in. We have people that come in for their grandmother's, at your birthday party. And one of the things that we hear often is, "I met my ex-wife, my current wife, my fiance." You know, at Cafe Sevilla, we're coming back for our thirty-fourth wedding anniversary, which I was in our San Diego location on Saturday night, and the couple had met there and was actually celebrating their thirty-fourth wedding anniversary. And so they were very happy to come back. So this is one of the things that we're looking for, is to really partner up with the community to better the environment for all of us. And so one of the things I think that we failed to mention is that we're very involved, the two of us, in the operation. So this is not an absentee ownership. You know, we really inspect what we expect, and we have, over the years, forged some very detailed best practice that we're very happy to know that we have a very strong management team, that we continue to grow and culture, and we're really working closely with them to make sure that they are applied. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Zick?
I'll save comments. I've got a lot of positive comments based on what you've presented, but the question I have relates back to security. So I'm wondering how things might work at your restaurant if a security issue comes up? What would be your relationship with the Triangle's security? What's your obligation with them?
Thanks for the question. We do not have security within the restaurant unless it's after ten o'clock and it's a night, we are going to be open later. We have discussed this with the ownership of the Triangle as already. And first of all, let's talk about inside security. We have licensed security staff by the state of California in all our locations, and they do manage anything that could be happening inside if anything needs to. We emphasize on not touching the customer, we emphasize on talking to the customer, we emphasize on de-escalating. That is absolutely what works the best. In term of assume they would be leaving or any otherwise, I informed the ownership that I would be very much in favor of having one security team that is taking care of the whole area. I think when people are leaving any of the bar and restaurant that are in the shopping center, they're going to the parking lot. We are better off having one team that is supervising all those folks and helping people go home without any form of an issue otherwise. So internally, we have our own security, our own employees, and we make sure they are properly certified and licensed. In term of the direct adjacent area around our doors, we certainly take care of those areas. But when they leave the area after that, we would look forward to the Triangle's security to be doing their work. And at this point, I don't know any better, but it's certainly on our short list to be meeting with the ownership.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners? I have a quick question. Thank you for your presentation. So I'm looking at the floor plan, looking at the dining area that is converted to the dance floor for portions of your operating hours during the week. And specifically, I'm going to cite Friday through Saturdays, Friday and Saturday, seven p.m. to ten p.m., the dining rooms converted to a dance area for flamenco or tango dinner show. Great. Eight p.m. to two a.m., Wednesday through Thursday, dining area is converted to salsa, bachata, ballroom dance classes and practices with instructors. That one doesn't, I really don't have a question related to that one. And then, six p.m. to ten p.m. Sunday, dining rooms converted to dance area, European Latin jazz sessions with full dinner menu. So my question is, on the floor plan, I see no place to sit. So I see a musician's stage, a dance floor. Are there going to be tables and chairs around that area?
Yes. There's actually two plans that were submitted.
Yes.
One says dining area.
Right.
And I would emphasize then, every table you see on that plan, the floor layout, dining layout, every table you see is for dining. The table we do remove where the small dance floor is going to be, which is about ten feet by eighteen feet. We're not talking about a huge surface of dance floor here. Those chairs and table will be put on a storage area that you see on the upper, on the center area here. There's a small storage area where it goes.
All right. So on handwritten page forty of the staff report, if we could put that up on the screen, if possible, it's the floor plan, dancing layout?
Dancing layout, the next one, area, yes.
Okay. So on the previous, on the floor plan dining layout, on handwritten page thirty-nine, it shows the layout of where all the tables are going to go. On handwritten page forty, it doesn't show any of the tables. So am I to assume that in the areas where the dance floor is not, there will be tables and chairs?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And those share move, they're not booth. They're tables and chairs that will literally move around, basically accommodating the size of the party that is coming.
Okay. It's just when I saw, when I saw dancing and dinner menu, and then I look at the floor plan, and I don't see any tables or chairs. I wonder if people are juggling plates while they're dancing and...
We apologize. No, yes, no.
No, that's fine.
We do need, all the booth around are actually seating areas while outside.
I see that.
And we will also have tables and chair, which are stackable, but we're able to move them around to accommodate a different size parties.
Okay, that helps me visually. Thank you very much. Okay, if there are no other questions of the applicant, I will open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishes to speak to this, please come forward. Okay, seeing that, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and ask if there's any other comments you wish to make or...
Just wanted to, I believe these were passed on to you.
Yes, we received them.
Give you a little bit of...
This is basically our, save the event. We, as much as precise we'd like to be, we do not yet have our opening date. Shooting for October, and we all keep our fingers crossed. We know how construction goes. So what we put together, and we have that in our other locations to give out, because we get a lot of requests, "When are you opening up in Costa Mesa?" Believe it or not, we get a lot of folks from here coming to the San Diego and the Long Beach locations. And actually, one gentleman two weekends ago said, "What, this is ten minutes away from my house." So anyway, so this is what we're passing on to a lot of folks to let them know when they're inquiring that we are coming. So of course, we'd love to have you for our opening ceremony. We will not recreate the running of the bull in the streets, I promise. But as we get closer to it, we'll have a better idea of the times and date for that event. Meanwhile, save the event, and then we'll get you a save the date card later on. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any final questions of staff? Okay, I will then close the public hearing and bring it to the dais and see if there's any comments or a motion from the commission. If there is, hit your make a motion button, and then I'll know who to recognize. Any motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Zick?
I would move that we find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, under SEQA Guideline, Section fifteen three oh one, and approve this zoning application nineteen forty-one, subject to conditions of approval, including those modified on the supplemental memorandum identified as condition of approval number four and number five.
There's a second. Okay, and there's a second on the motion by Commissioner Colbert. Any comments on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Zick?
I'm very encouraged by what I heard from the applicant, Eric and Ann. I'm encouraged in a couple of respects. The fact that you have two existing, successful restaurants helps me understand your level of commitment, helps me understand your intention with regard to this location. You know, when I hear Ann say that you inspect what you expect, and you said it without hesitation, you said it with, I mean, it came out from your DNA, and to me, that tells me the kind of manager you are, owner. And that's impressive to me because that's one of those pillars of quality management. And so I'm enthusiastically supporting your application. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Colbert, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Similarly, along the lines of Commissioner Zick's comments, my questions were particularly related to security, and I think you outlined those well. As I frequent this area quite often for food, entertainment, I think you pretty much touched on the concerns that I had related to how security will be handled and a protocol that would be surrounding that, specifically related to de-escalation. I like the way you talked about that and with one security team and how that would be handled. Tapas is one of my favorite cuisines and things, so I'm pretty excited about the opportunity here. That has no bearing on my vote, but I just wanted to make that statement, and I wish you the best.
Thank you. Commissioner Torje?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, for your graciousness. It's my second Planning Commission meeting, and so I'm excited to make a comment. I appreciated Commissioner Zurich's comments about what had happened previously in two thousand and five and hearing about the different minor conditional use permits that had gone on with the different restaurants. And I just remember those years when the Triangle or the Triangle Square was empty, and there were restaurants there, and myself having experienced being in the lower parts of the parking structure and facing security issues because there weren't people present. I think some of the initial things that would have been a concern to me if there was outdoor entertainment or even live entertainment in a restaurant are different now, that there are more uses in the Triangle. And so I am very excited about this and wholeheartedly look forward to it. Thank you.
Excellent. And Commissioner Russell?
Yes. This is very exciting, having been around Costa Mesa for a number of years and watching it be Triangle Square and having it be the Triangle and restaurants come and go, to have another restaurant come in and have something that I think will be different than some of the other things that are in the city at large. One of my big concerns was whether there'd be any concerns from residents, and we did not hear any, which is a good thing. I too had some initial concerns about security, but it sounds like that between the police department and the applicants, all of those things are going to be covered. So I look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, all commissioners. You know, I'm excited to support this motion. I was just reading the other day, and I wanted to pull it up, make sure I got it right, but, you know, Chef Carlos Sagaldo at Tocco Maria just got a Michelin star. There's so many good things happening in Costa Mesa with respect to what I call the experiential kind of movement that's going on with younger consumers who are not necessarily interested in shopping but going out and having a nice dining experience, nice entertainment experience. And Costa Mesa seems to be, and I love it, attracting these really novel, unique approaches to food service and entertainment. And this just seems like it's going to be terrifically successful. Clearly, these folks are professionals. They've been doing this in a couple of other cities. I have every confidence in their management expertise. So I'm really excited and looking forward to visiting it. I think it just is one more example of what I'm so proud of about the city and where we're at in terms of, you know, a new, you know, a visual arts museum coming to the arts district, all these new restaurants we're getting, what's happening with Sobeka and Soco, and it's just terrific. It's really exciting, and I can see why now, and my wife and I are sitting out on our front porch like the old geezers we are, we see all these families walking by with their strollers and their babies and their dogs, it's because Costa Mesa is a place where young families want to come and raise their families. And I think we're doing a very good job attracting businesses like this, and so I'm very proud to support this application. And with that, I'll call for the question. You do have to wait for your buttons to light up green or red, and then you can touch it. I think it worked.
That motion carried five zero with Vice Chair Harlan and Commissioner Navarro Woods absent.
Okay, great. And that decision becomes final in seven days unless appealed to the City Council. Thank you very much. Best of luck to you. Okay, and that takes us to departmental reports. Public Services Report, Bart, do you have anything tonight?
No reports tonight.
Thank you. Development Services Report, Mr. Curtis.
I have nothing tonight either.
Okay. City Attorney, Mr. Preziosi.
Briefly, I just wanted to update the commission. Back in October of 2018, League of California Cities, along with a coalition of California and other states, cities in other states, filed a lawsuit challenging the FCC's adoption of the small cell regulations. And as you know, those small cell regulations are the basis for the city's regulations. That case was filed the Ninth Circuit. It was transferred to the Tenth Circuit. It was re-transferred back to the Ninth Circuit, which is more favorable for the city's positions. At this point, the California League of Cities has filed its opening brief in the case, that was on the twenty-fourth. And just very briefly, the case itself challenges the FCC regulations on three main bases. The first one is the shot clock. As you know, the shot clock provides sixty to ninety days, which, when dealing with one application, is not incredibly overwhelming. However, when a planning department is faced with many applications, trying to keep track of the shot clock and try to maintain those deadlines, is incredibly burdensome on city staff. The next basis were the fees that were imposed that were capped at a hundred dollars, and lawsuit challenges those fees as well. In addition, the FCC regulations, in essence, prohibit cities from charging fair market value on the use of public property. So plus, that is a third major basis. And then finally, the FCC regulations improperly lower the aesthetic and other standards under the act. So those are the four main bases for the challenge. The only real news is that the League of California Cities and the Coalition of the cities have filed their opening brief for the Ninth Circuit, and obviously, there'll be a response, and it would be some time before the Ninth Circuit rules on that motion. But nonetheless, I want to update the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Preziosi. Commissioner, do you have any quick questions you want to ask him, or is that report sufficient enough? Yes, Commissioner Zick?
It seems that everyone in the public that comes and speaks on this is concerned about health, and there doesn't appear to be any aspect of that in this. Are you aware of any... Are you aware of any discussion or concern as part of this lawsuit on, on that aspect or no?
No, this, this lawsuit really has no, nothing to do with the emissions or the health concerns that have been expressed by residents.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will stand, we will adjourn tonight's meeting in honor and in memory of Mike Robinson. Thank you for your service to our city, Mike, and rest in peace. And we are standing adjournment to the Planning Commission meeting of July 8, 2019. Thank you, good night.